Good evening. Welcome to the October 21st, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM discussing personnel matters. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank Principal Regan and the staff here at Eagle for hosting us this evening. A couple of years ago, the board made a conscious decision to make sure that we hold meetings throughout the year at the various buildings throughout the district. And tonight, we're here at Eagle, and thank you. We'll start with introductions.
Diane Stever.
Christine Back.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wejasinger.
Joanne Cunningham.
Lynn Lenhart.
And Judy Keough.
And Mike Cooper had a previous personal commitment and won't be here this evening. First is the minutes of the, which, what was the date of it? The minutes of the October 7th, 2015 regular board meeting.
Second.
That's the first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Next, Student Senate. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate? Okay, great. If you'd come up to the microphone. And while she's walking up, anybody here who is a participation in government student, your requirement is to stay till 9:00 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9:00, we'll take a break. You'll come up and there's, there'll be sign-out sheets for you, and if you have any documents that you need a board member to sign, we'll do that for you. If the meeting gets over before 9:00, then just come up at the end of that time and do the sign-outs.
Hi, my name is Ellie Bell. I'm here on behalf of the Student Senate with the report from the past two weeks of progress we've had during our meetings. So first of all, we have dodgeball, which will be starting November 2nd, and it will continue until Friday. We won't have it Wednesday because of a half-day. We have the building release form, or, yeah, building release forms filled out for the gyms after school, and we've had announcements the past week trying to advocate for a lot of participation. Next, we have the sleep-out for the homeless sponsored by St. Catherine's, which Student Senate has taken upon us to advertise to the rest of the high school to try to, I guess, gain a lot of participation from the student body, being that it's a community event. And they're raising money to put towards St. Catherine's homeless shelter. And for that, we have announcements starting next Monday, and the event itself will be November 6th, starting at 8:00 PM. We have a Senate team going to represent the school. And then we also are trying to fund furniture for the gym B foyer, being that we have a lot of student athletes sitting on the ground after school from the time that school ends to the time that practices start. So we're trying to, Student Senate decided that we're going to buy the tables and chairs and desks for students to sit at, being that the libraries close and sometimes there's an awkward in-between time where there's nowhere to go to finish homework. And then finally, we, Senate has decided to host an end-of-the-year community event. It's similar to the Gladiator, I guess, festival they have at Shaker. I don't know if anybody's heard of it, but it's a, like, a big, community-wide event that has all three levels of the district, the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school levels. There are games, you're raising money for a charity of your choice. And since Senate hasn't really done much in the past few years to participate community-wide, we decided that we should probably start getting involved in the community.
Sounds exciting. When do you plan on doing that? Would that be May or June?
We were trying to figure out a weekend that would allow the most, I guess, availability. And we thought that maybe the last weekend in May would work, but we still have to figure out the logistics due to other events that might overlap.
Good luck with that.
I think the furniture's a great idea, so, a great insight. And also, as you advance in your planning for that event, make sure Mr. Nolte, who's a director of facilities, gets brought into the loop, especially if you're going to be doing it on school property.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the St. Catherine event, is that at St. Catherine's or is that somewhere else in the town?
That will be hosted at the Firehouse near Elmav Park, I think. I'm not sure what.
Okay, I think it's one of the Selkirk ones. Is that Lynn?
The Delmar.
Shear Bush, right. I think it's Selkirk.
Yeah, it's still Delmar.
It's Delmar.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Anyone else have any questions for? Thank you very much. The next agenda item is our report by the interim superintendent, Jody Monroe.
Good evening. So many of us attended the NISBA conference this past weekend and through yesterday. We had 26 students, art students, selected to participate in the School Boards Association Art Exhibit. That exhibit brings attention to student work. We had all of our schools, schools were represented at this display, and a reception was held. And three of our students and families actually were able to attend the reception. And Melanie Painter, our art supervisor, and Tracy Fortin, one of our art teachers, came down to attend the reception as well. So it was fabulous artwork that we saw. Also, some of our staff and students presented at the conference as well. Justin Brown, Navar Johnson, Alex Baker, and Tim Blake are two students. They participated on the student help desk. It was a great workshop, and I'd like to thank also Dr. D'Angelo for helping to coordinate that and get everyone down there to present. And finally, Lori Nolan, a Glenmont PE teacher, has earned a spot in the jump rope for Hart and hoops for, on the top-10 list in New York State. She's going to be recognized for her efforts at the 78th Annual New York State Phys Ed Conference in November. Congratulations to Lori.
Congratulations.
And that's my report.
Thank you, Jody. Next, the Board of Education report. As Jody said, a lot of us were able to go down and participate in the NISBA conference, of which it was Lynn's last year as president. So Lynn took a good job. Congratulations. Lynn has been the president for the past two years of statewide association, and prior to that, had served in various capacities statewide as vice president and whatnot. And is very dedicated to school boards throughout the state, and so we appreciate that, Lynn. I think all of us really got a lot out of the conference and different thoughts that we'll be proposing throughout the year and whatnot, so. Anyone else want to?
I know that, you know, this is the conference where we get the majority of our training for the year. We do regional, we attend regional conferences, but this is where we spend two days on educational sessions. And I know a number, I think Diane was there, and I think Mike Cooper was there for their day-long law conference, which was, covered everything from contract negotiations to transgender rights. So that was very interesting. And I did go to a very interesting session on the effect of peer culture and student achievement that was presented by a faculty member from Harvard, and I hope to get his slides and forward them on to Ms. Monroe, because it was just fascinating, so. But very much appreciate our ability to go down and attend, and engage with school board members from across the country. And also, I want to recognize Ms. Barrett for taking care of all of our logistics. She deserves a note of thanks for that.
I wasn't able to attend the conference, so I decided I would go to the music concert Monday night at the high school, and it was phenomenal, as always. And we have another concert Wednesday that's coming up, so if you get an opportunity, go out and check out what our great students have accomplished so far this year. The other thing is about a week and a half ago, the middle school put on A Wake For The Cure for a student at the middle school, and it was a wonderful turnout. And I was wondering if I could put Mr. Klugman on the spot, just to say how wonderful the event did and how much money it raised, if you wouldn't mind.
We just got an email today saying that it was a grand total, as of shortly after this morning, a little over $35,000.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Thank you for everybody for putting on such a wonderful event for that student. It was truly amazing, so.
Yep. Giving back, the one thing, I mean, there was great sessions, and I'll tell you, the artists, that was wonderful, too. But I was able to go to the business meeting, which Lynn was running as a delegate. And just so we know for next year, because I always thought when we had an alternate, that it was just in case I couldn't make it, and what I found out was that we're able to do, two people could go. So I would go for quite a time, and then I could leave, and Charmaine could replace me. So that was a nice thing, so you weren't there for about four hours, and yet we still were, still have our voices heard.
And that was the first time I was a delegate, and I think it was great, because it gave me the opportunity to see, you know, Lynn in action, but also to be a part of the discussion. And I would also recommend that for next year, as a board, we look at a lot of those resolutions, because things were being amended all the time, and at least for the time period I was there, I was like, okay, I think this is how our board, what we'd be supportive of. But just to prepare a bit more the delegate going in or delegates, but it was a great experience, so.
Well, what was helpful when they were amended, at least we had the rationales of, so that was, you know, each resolution, there's like 30 of them, I think, that they wanted to do. But, yeah, it kind of got a little hairy at the end, I think, with people going back and forth.
Well, there were several resolutions, not recommended by the Resolutions Committee. We have a committee of representatives from around the state that look at all of them, and, you know, with the help of staff, analyze them and get backup, backup information if necessary, and then either recommend them or don't. And, I mean, there were questions, there actually was very good discussion of the ones that were recommended in terms of testing APR. I mean, obviously, those are the big hot issues. But on the ones not recommended, you know, there was additional discussion that was a little awkward at times.
Sure. But also, but- I would definitely recommend doing, like, switching, because it is a long morning, and then you miss the educational seminars that they have. So I was able to sneak out and go to one of them while Charmaine was there.
And it gives people the experience of being a delegate, you know, to share the experience.
I also was able to listen to the commissioner, so I think the one, it was actually very good. I really enjoyed listening to her, and one of the things that she pretty much said was in place for this year or next year's assessments coming up in April and May is the K-8 will be shortened, shortened, so that was a good thing. And she's also, and had stated that they were sending out surveys, because they want all the teachers to evaluate and send in recommendations for the new standards for K-8, really in math. And actually, I got an email today from the teacher, so she's doing that.
They sent out today.
So it sounds like it's really on topic.
I thought she did the best, I mean, I've heard her a couple of times at this point, but I thought she did the best job that I've heard so far, you know, at this conference. And there was time for people to ask questions, and I had to end it right at 4:00, but then she was inundated by people afterwards, too. That might have been a poor thing to say, to say, "I'll answer any questions afterwards." She really was inundated.
Oh, yeah. And I left feeling so much better about, like, where it's going now, because for so many years, it's kind of been a turn wheel, so. And then there was a couple of other really good conferences I went to, but I didn't get that good information on that.
Lynn, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm probably going to be repeating a little bit of what Jody said, but I just wanted to thank her and Sal and the Help Desk team for, number one, doing the presentation. And I realize you were opposite the commissioner, so probably there weren't a lot of people in the room, and I know other sessions had the same issue, but, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, so many things are condensed in a short period of time. I'm sure you would have had a lot more people.
We had, I think, close to 20, so we still had a decent turnout.
Well, that was good. And also for having the display, also. I did stop at the desk in the morning as I did the art show. I apologize, I had to be at another meeting, so I couldn't come to the reception for the art show. But I did go down in the morning when I had a chance to look at all the art, and I was really impressed. And I know my daughter went down with my husband during the reception, and my daughter wanted to buy that picture with the dog. I knew she loved it.
Yeah, wasn't that great?
And the lighthouse, and she couldn't believe an elementary student had actually painted that picture. I mean, she was shocked. So if that student wants to make some extra money, he would still buy that picture. But still, I appreciated that, too, of, you know, having such a large part of that art show. I mean, we had some great pictures there.
Really.
Also, want to thank all of you who attended, you know, because obviously, you've already expressed some things that you've learned from being there. And, I mean, it is a good way to not just learn things, but learn things from other people, from other parts of the state, and what's going on in their areas. And lastly, personally, I appreciated the fact, you know, your support and being there for me. And, you know, I was really proud to have all of you stand up and be recognized, you know, at the kickoff evening. And I thought that was great, so I did appreciate all of you being there, board members and administrators. So, thank you.
All right. Moving on, we next will have our presentation, and we're going to have a presentation this evening that deals with the Pine Hollow Arboretum in the K-5 science curriculum. So the presentation will be given by Ms. Jen Gagne, Science and Technology Supervisor, Mr. Michael Klugman, our middle school principal, and Ms. Diana Regan, the principal here
Thank you. I want to express our gratitude in being able to present tonight to the board, and also recognize a number of other people. I'd like to bring up Ms. Barb Regal, who's making her way to the stage now, fifth-grade teacher who connects us all together through these two programs. I'd also like to introduce Anita Sanchez and Kaia Buell, who are joining us tonight from the arboretum. I'm really here just to introduce folks. We're going to be brief intentionally, so you have an opportunity to direct questions our way. There's a lot of people that are involved in the program that are not here tonight, who I also wanted to mention. Ms. Cindy Jurowitz has been invaluable in her role providing and setting up and coordinating transportation for us. Mr. Landry and his staff at the high school, and creating an environment that really has made what you're about to hear from Anita, you know, a program and novelty that is really neat. So without further ado, I and Diana really work in the background, and Jen, too, to some degree. Kelly Babic, a high school teacher, really coordinates our high school volunteers. And as Barb can attest to, each of our fifth-grade teachers, some of our fourth-grade teachers and some of our third-grade teachers are taking their classrooms to the arboretum, which Anita will talk more about. So Anita Sanchez is with the arboretum in a consultant's capacity. We brought Anita on board, because Anita is a longtime DEC field biologist. She's worked with students in classrooms. She's designed curriculum for almost any age of student. And you also may be familiar with her husband, George Steele. George has done environmental programming in a lot of our elementary schools, where he'll go in and work in the big backyard, for instance, in Glenmont or in Slingerlands. So we tapped into Anita and George to help us at the arboretum in writing curriculum and designing this program. And Kaia is also here as a member of the Pine Hollow Arboretum Board. Some of you may know Dr. John Buell. The arboretum spans now 46 years, I think. 50 years? 50 years. I guess I've been on the board too long. And as John mentioned tonight, John has planted over 3,600 species of shrub and tree, all native to the zone that we live in. And the arboretum, for those that, folks that don't know, if you're familiar with where the Slingerlands turnabout is, near Price Chopper and the post office, the arboretum on Maple Avenue is just less than a mile away. So it's really right in our backyard, and it's created this wonderful opportunity for both our high school and our elementary students. And here to tell us more about it is Anita Sanchez.
Well, thank you for letting me come and talk with you tonight. I am the, can everybody hear me?
The folks at home, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, that'll be good. I'm the former education coordinator at Five Rivers. I'm retired now. And I've been having a great time working at the arboretum, which is one of the best-kept secrets around here, but it's a wonderful place. Since 2011, we've been working on developing a program of environmental education, field study at the arboretum for elementary schools. And in those years, we've had well over 1,000 elementary schools, students, come to Pine Hollow. Concurrently, we've been developing a high school program. This was Mike Klugman's idea initially. We started working with a few high school students from Bethlehem, which is scheduled by Kelly Babic, and they meet with me for more than 10 hours of field instruction at the arboretum. So they learn about environmental science, field study techniques, and they also learn teaching methodology so that they can work with the elementary students. So this high school program has been wonderful fun to work with these high school students. And the program's grown every year. Last year, we had 45 Bethlehem high school students working with the elementary school students. The program, we've done elementary students, students from pre-K to fifth grade, but last year, we concentrated on third and fourth grade. We were very fortunate to get a Bender grant, which enabled us to invite five classrooms from Albany City Schools. And Pine Hollow, through the grant, was able to pay for all of the busing and all of the instruction for the Albany City School, so the Bethlehem high school students worked with the Albany City third graders. Then we had many classrooms from Bethlehem, which the high school students also worked with. This year, we're offering a program where we're concentrating on third and fourth, although we're willing to work with fifth as well. The program involves, first of all, two classroom visits, where I go into the classroom and do two visits, where I prepare the students for the field experience that they're going to have. The first classroom is an introduction to the arboretum and then biodiversity, and the second class is on the different field measurements we're going to be taking at the arboretum. Last year, we focused on measuring the circumference of trees and tracking the growth of trees, and also measuring soil pH. This year, we're going to be concentrating, as well as on the trees, we're going to be concentrating on aquatic measurements using macroinvertebrates, which are basically creepy crawlers like tadpoles and dragonflies and insects and things like that, sampling them using nets, and using the presence of different species like dragonflies as an indicator of water quality for the arboretum's ponds. There are 12 ponds at the arboretum, as well as the tree plantings. So we are very excited about this program. We have, again, I'm hoping for approximately 40 to 50 high school students who will be participating with this program. And in future years, I'd love to see us work with the early elementary students as well. Mike, anything to add?
Just turn it over to Jen.
Okay.
Wish I passed the batash.
Thank you. So because we're talking about the arboretum tonight, I'm also going to talk to you a little bit about our K-5 curriculum, which at this point is sort of on its way out, because the, last year, New York State decided they would adopt the science strategic plan to input new science standards in the upcoming years. So the cabinet's done a lot of work last year and this year, trying to figure out what that really means for K-5 and where we're going to go. So our program right now, that you'll see up there, is that we try to cover three units in every grade, and we tried to get a mix of earth science topics, biology topics, and then some type of physical science. So this is what we currently do, and when we've looked at what we're going to move to, there's a lot of things that are changing. So anything there that is in orange would be a new unit that our BOCs offers through the kit, which is what most of our programming is at this point. So those are all new units that teachers would have to learn, learn background on, and learn the kit to teach. Then in green is things that were shifted down a grade level, which means they may previously have been taught in third, and now they're getting pushed to second or first. So these is more rigorous. We're going to expect our kids to understand more behind the science at a lower grade level for everything that is in green, which you'll see is, you know, definitely a couple of things. And you'll also see that we're going way back into kindergarten also, so their curriculum, too, will be increased the first year that they start. In red is all the units that are going to have some type of engineering strand. So it is believed that the New York State standards will very closely mimic the next-generation science standards, and a large portion of those is these engineering strands. So you may see, like, I personally know that the plant growth and development unit will have an engineering part, but it won't be, the whole kit will not be based around the engineering process, where the ones that are in red will be more focused on those strands. And then finally, the last ones there, the ones in black, which you'll see are the minimal ones there, are staying in place or actually getting shifted up a grade level. So, you know, this is something that we do expect to go into place over the next two to three years. There's no definite timeline at this point. Over the summer, they did get, State Ed was able to get together writing groups, so all the standards are written, and they are, were supposed to be voted on this winter through State Ed. We're waiting for one more science survey to come out, where teachers would have one more opportunity to look at the standards, give feedback, and then review. But at this point, science, that survey, has been pushed back till after November 30th, when the Common Core 1 closes. So we anticipate a little bit of, you know, delay there, but hopefully, this would be something that would go into place two school years from now, because it is in the strategic plan to make sure that there's a full year of professional development allotted to teachers before they would be ready to teach this. And we do see the major changes and the most professional development for our district would be in this K-5 setting. So the other setup that we have is Mrs. Regal brought down all of her crayfish in a display of some of the work that they do with the crayfish, and she has the board that they race on. And sometimes we get crayfish that aren't so hardy, but this year, they're trying to escape and crawl out of boxes and habitats. So if you want to look at them, beware.
This guy came out of the, look at, look at this crayfish. This crayfish, on a weekend, came out of the tank, down the long hallway, around the corner, down the stairs, and met Virginia Lawler when she was coming in on a Sunday to do some work, and scared the out of her. So this thing is huge. And then they decided to put it in a baggie and put it in my mailbox. And this was, they were, this is ginormous. But they have been really fighting with each other. This is actually Chris Porter's setup. I'm not going to take credit for it, but they're all the same, and there are about a dozen in each one, but they're all hiding, because they don't like to be out, you know, in the light. So, oh, there's one. But they're, over, we found out that, from the other fifth-grade teachers, that overall, they're all very feisty this year, so there's some.
And when they crawl out and down, they die, and they have to be in water.
Right. They found various dead ones throughout the building. They were dying at a rapid rate, so.
Or eating each other. That's the only good way to do it.
So that is all we have for our presentation. A few questions, we'd love to take them.
Can you talk a bit more about the professional development and what that might look like?
Yeah, so the BOCs, our Capital Region BOCs, will be offering training on the kits they'll be offering. We won't be adopting all of them, but obviously, the ones that we do decide to go with that they offer, they will offer trainings for our teachers. Also, I see us having to take our middle school teachers and our high school teachers and give them opportunities to go down and talk to teachers at the elementary level and give them, like, a general background in different things. Like, I'll go back to plants and animal. Well, the plant growth unit is getting moved to second grade, so those teachers really have, at this point, don't have a huge background in plants, probably haven't taught plants in many years, if ever. I know, you know, as our staff continues to be new and grow, you know, we would probably have to send down some seventh-grade teachers to give them a general background and potentially go through some of the kit also with them, and how to make connections and tie-in curriculum for students.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Lynn?
It seems like there's a different emphasis with the new standards, like more of the biological sciences and then less of, like, the physical sciences. Will that be made up a little bit in middle school, then?
Yes, it will be. Basically, all of these were looked at at the spectrum K-12. So where kids need to start, and then how they're going to progress. So some of the chemistry, more chemistry topics or physics topics might get addressed later, but in more detail, and then set kids up to finish that off, you know, in the higher levels.
Do you have any concerns that the students in that level will not be able to grasp some of the concepts?
Yeah, so the most drastic one is our space systems. So weather going down to Kinder, I mean, they're all sort of a concern going down. But the one I would have the most concerns about is the space systems, because we currently do that in grade three, so that's actually getting shifted down to. So we're going to have to look very closely at the standards when they come out. It may not be, the expectation may not be the same as it was, but we just know in the next-generation standards that space sciences is no longer grade three, it's grade one.
The other, the other problem with that, the fifth graders starting, just a logistical problem, is that fifth graders are much bigger than third graders, and you can put third graders in the starlight now, and it's pretty crowded. I can't imagine taking, like, most of my kids are bigger. I can't imagine taking all those kids, 24 and plus, and to start, plus an expert, because I'm an expert, but, you know, into starlight itself, that would be, it'll be, it'll be interesting. In the dark. In the dark.
I see, I see students, I see students smiling out there. Do you remember Star Lab? How many of you remember Star Lab?
I've crawled into the Star Lab.
That was great.
It was class, I did that.
The solids and liquids, are you going to be talking about masses and volume, all that good stuff with second graders?
Yeah, and currently, if I go back.
Currently, eighth graders work on that and our concept to grasp.
We do a couple of things right now. We do balancing and weighing in second grade, so they just do it at a much lower level. So they're not like learning, you know, they might learn the word matter and that, what the phases may be, but they're not really going to go in-depth like our eighth grade curriculum hits them with.
You never know, so.
Well, we don't know either because we, it hasn't been published yet. We're just under the assumption that it'll be very close to what we're seeing in the next generation science standards.
Thank you.
Question on the Arboretum trips. Are they, do the students go just once a year or they go multiple times and do they go like in the fall and the winter, spring?
The high school students or the, the elementary students?
Elementary.
I'll let somebody else.
It's just been once a year.
Once a year, okay.
Yeah, our high school students go a lot. She makes them go out in the winter to get training over there in the fall and the spring. And we do have students from the high school that will do multiple trips for the students there.
It begins in January, February.
Off you do.
That's about it.
Now, are there?
If we had more bus money, we'd go around.
Well, often, okay.
And those students, they can get community service credit for those Pine Hollow hours.
What are the hours over there, just for the general public? Because this is being televised, so, or will be on Sunday night. Just, do you have set hours during the week where the general public could come in or?
The property is open during daylight hours.
Okay.
Twenty-four, you know, whatever. The hours are shortening now.
Right, it's shorter, right.
And we do have a building that we use as the visitor center. With your permission, I'll leave a couple of pictures that will tell you all this.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
And that's open on the weekends from April through October. The Halloween is about it.
Yeah, okay.
But I will say, I know time is precious, but I will say, please, Board of Education, regardless of what year tonight, it's on Sixteen Bengal Avenue. It's a fun place to be, to decompress and to work. This is my husband's dream and it's, it's landscaping in a very natural environment. It's totally different than Five Rivers. So.
I've heard a lot about it. I know your son and I, I've always talked about going to it, but I've never made it and I definitely will, will make a trip over.
You call, I'll know that it's in the brochure. My husband will be happy to give you a tour.
Okay, great.
He's very good.
I was there when it first opened as a visitor center because actually, I knew this elderly couple, Ellen Brandy Shutter, who owned the house and then died unfortunately. And then the addition was put on for the visitor center. And I had gotten a little tulip tree at the time, which was about this tall. And now, and this is only a couple, it's huge, only a couple of years ago. They grow very fast in this climate, if you need a fast-growing tree. But he was giving, your husband was giving them away at that point.
Well, they still are. They do, they're very cool that they, they're one of my favorite trees because the blooms are like tulips and things like those. But please, you're all welcome. Happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, we, we have a tradition that we give out Eagle pens to people who come and present, so if you'd like to come up and receive an Eagle pen. This is a Buell. This is a Buell. Would you please come up and get one?
Thank you. I'm going to wear this.
I think this is a great resource. It is right, right around the corner.
It's a hidden treasure. Thank you very much. Nice meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you again for that presentation. Very nice. We're very fortunate to live in a community like this where people are very generous with their time and efforts and everything. Next is, at this point, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board on an agenda item? No? There being no one, we'll move on then. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through B.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Item number nine, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through E.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number ten, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action item A.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? The next agenda item is a recognition of visitors who would like to address the Board on any non-agenda item. There being any? Yes. Could you please come up and state your name for the microphone?
Sure. My name is Alison Nunez and I'm a member of the B O U, the Bethlehem Opportunities Unlimited. So I'm just here tonight just to, to talk about our program that we're running on Sept- September, what am I thinking? On November twelfth. It's Talking With Your Teen, an open discussion, an open conversation about substance abuse. It's been a program, it's a third in the series, so for the past couple of years, we've, we've also done this. This year, we're doing it a little differently. It's going to start at five-thirty with refreshments. We have exhibitors, about thirty, thirteen, fourteen exhibitors from our middle school and high school SAD programs. We have the Bethlehem Police Department, the middle school P T O. So it's really, we also have, I'm just thinking about Albany County Stop D W Y, et cetera. So it really is a community partnership. So it's not, because B O U itself is made up of, we have teachers, we have parents, et cetera, and representatives from, from the town. We're going to, it's going to be, we're going to have people who have been in recovery, youth in recovery, some other folks that are going to talk as keynote speakers. And then we're going to break, break out into parent sessions and teenagers, student sessions. And part of that is because we wanted it to be a conversation about substance abuse. So, and we also want people, parents, to, to leave with some information. We want some information so that they know, or start that conversation. How can we start the conversation? So we have also local, part of the beginning keynote is going to be local information, what's going on when it comes to substance use and abuse in our area. And then our kids are going to be, it's actually myself and another social worker, I'm a social worker in another district, myself and another social worker, really going to talk to our kids about, you know, how can they, what are the questions that they can ask their parents? How do they ask them? How do they go about? So we also want to thank, thank the Board and the School District for giving us the opportunity to do this. We think it's very, it's something we need always and we've done it, I mean, as I said, we've done it for the past three years. So we're really looking to get the word out from anybody, you know, who can. I know we've got it on the school, we've had it out in S N Ns, but really, we hope that we'll get as much coverage and as many people to come and attend. So we've worked hard, we've started planning this in May, so this has been, we planned all summer, so we're hoping that this will be a great event. But thank you and the School District for letting us do this.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll definitely, this is aired on Sunday nights and I know I have seen S N Ns on it also and I'm sure they'll send out more as it gets closer to that date.
Thank you and thanks for giving me the time.
Yep. Moving on, future meeting and events. We, our next, trying to look and see, I'm struggling with reading this new format. Friday, we have a, October twenty-third at nine a.m., there's a Superintendent's Evaluation Review Committee. The members on the board that will be there, meeting with the superintendent. Next is a regular scheduled board meeting on November fourth with an anticipated six p.m. start time for executive session, seven p.m. public session. That will be at the high school. Next meeting after that is Wednesday, November eighteenth. Again, six p.m. executive session with a seven p.m. public meeting and that will be at the Glenmont Elementary School on the November eighteenth date. We do not have any need to go into executive session again. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
First and second. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Pick students if you'd come up. We'll sign, you have to do the sign-out sheets and we'll sign your papers. You chose a good meeting to come to.